Being seven o'clock, we'll call the common council meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
I am the flagrant United States of America. To our republic which stands one nation, indivisible, in its most sovereign.
Michelle, you have roll call. Right, roll call's been taken. We're looking for a motion to adopt the agenda with, is there any provisions? Mr. Morak?
Yes, a move we adopt the agenda except for E under part seven. Approve the developer's agreement of Midwest properties that it will be taken off deferred until next meeting or special meeting.
What are you checking to, Dave?
Under E Economic Development Committee.
Number two, line item two.
Okay, alright.
Number two.
And Mr. Tom O'Connell seconded. Motion's been made and seconded to adopt the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Move on to approval of November tenth, 2020 council minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Fred Zog, seconded by Lori Dean. Any additions or corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Authorization to pay bills, Mr. Morak?
Yes, move we pay bills in the amount of eight hundred fourteen thousand, six hundred thirty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Dave Morak, seconded by Dennis Herter. To pay the bills in eight hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. Please cast your ballots.
She's got to unlock it.
Unlock it.
It is.
No, one more.
Sorry.
No problem.
We're good.
Fred, you gonna hold?
Nope.
That's it, Fred.
Motion carried by all. Move on to public input. Hearing none, we'll move on. Our next on the agenda is the COVID-19 update from the Wapak County Health Officer, Mr. Jed Wolt.
Hey there, everyone. I'm Jed Wolt, I'm Wapak County Health Officer. Thanks for having me tonight. Thought it'd be a good time to give you guys all an update on kind of the status of how things are going in the county and in the region with the pandemic. And to say this, at least, I get to share a little bit of good news with you tonight. It's been a long stretch of not being able to share very good news, but we've started to take a little bit of a turn here the last few weeks with the trend in cases and as well as hospitalizations and deaths. So we went through a really difficult seven-week stretch. Basically, it started at the end of September, all through October until the midway point of November. I'm gonna share my screen real quick, so give me a second. Can you see my screen?
Yeah.
Yes.
So this is just a screenshot of our dashboard that's available for everybody to take a look at on our website. But this is, these are the numbers from today. So we've had a total of over thirty-nine hundred positive confirmed cases from the beginning. So that's our total confirmed cases. And we've also added, this is something new, these are probable cases. Probable cases are cases that are a little bit more significant now because those are the rapid antigen testing actually classified as probables. So they're still counting positive cases. So we started contributing that too. So that's the total cases that we've had throughout this pandemic that have been tested. I think there's been a lot more folks that may have been sick or didn't even know they were sick and just haven't been tested, but that's what we have. This number is the number of currently active cases, so folks that are in isolation right now, they tested positive and they're currently isolated. And this number's really come down in the last couple weeks. And it's a important number because that's kind of tells you where we're at right now as far as current activity. Three, four weeks ago, this was at six hundred. So we've really come down lately and that's a really good sign to see. Recovered, this is a number of all the folks that have recovered that have been confirmed positive and have since recovered. And this is a number, this is, our number of deaths in the county is a pretty high number. We actually, I think, are probably have, I think it was the third highest rate for death in the state for a county. So that stretch that we went through had a significant toll. And you know, it really, a lot of it did come from our long-term care facilities. They all experienced some level of outbreaks, some had some really high level of outbreaks. And unfortunately, we lost a lot of people through that surge that we had. You know, and not all these deaths are older people, the majority of them are sixty-five and older. You know, we've had deaths of younger fifties, forties, and not all of these deaths are long-term care facilities. We've had folks that have died in the hospital, we've had folks that haven't made it to the hospital, so that's a pretty significant number. But I'm gonna move back, well, just one other thing with the dashboard. There's all kinds of things that you can check out here. We actually even have it, the mapping that our GIS has put together, you can click on these by township or city and you can see the total number of cases, the total number of active cases, and you can also do it by district. And it'll show you the total number of cases and active cases. And this, we have hospitalizations, so we have a lot of information available on this dashboard. One slide I'm gonna kind of highlight here, if I can, this is our total by week. And you can really see when we started climbing here, end of September, October, where we had seven straight weeks of just about three hundred to three hundred and fifty cases a week, which in some of these weeks, we were averaging fifty cases a day, which is an extremely critically high level of cases. Once we got to this surge, this is where we had to change from public health, from our contact tracing to we could only contact the positive cases. Up until that point, we were contacting the positive cases plus their contacts to let them know they were a close contact and they. When we got into the surge, we just did not have the resources and capability, even though we hired ten extra limited-term employees to help us with that, we still cannot keep up. So it got to some really extremely high levels of cases. And we had a really extremely high burden or rate in the state that put us in that critically high burden. We finally, when we did start coming out of this, it started dropping pretty quick and you can see where we've been the last three weeks. We'd actually even dropped out of that critically high level rate into the very high level. So we still have really high levels of cases, but we're starting to drop out of that critically high level. And if we can keep things kind of going how they have been and kind of hold things steady and keep things together, you know, our projections are to continue to go down. And that's really encouraging. You kind of pair that with, you know, the vaccines starting to become available and maybe we're getting closer to coming out on the other side of this. I'm very cautious about that, you know, we just went through Thanksgiving. So far, we haven't seen any type of spike related to Thanksgiving. Think we have to get through this week and see how things look. And then we do have Christmas coming up, so this next month is gonna be really important for us to get through and hopefully it's gonna be really difficult. I know it's difficult for Thanksgiving, it's gonna be difficult for Christmas to not gather, but if we can make it through the Christmas with not having a big spike, I think we're gonna keep on getting closer to getting to the other side of this. There's some light coming through now where cases have, like I've mentioned, cases are starting to decline. The vaccine, we could have, as soon as tomorrow or Thursday, FDA could have emergency approval of the Pfizer vaccine. And as soon as that gets approved, we're gonna start being able to vaccinate people. Now, it's gonna be limited numbers, start with what's available, and it's gonna be targeted to the priority, the Phase 1A groups, which are gonna be healthcare workers and long-term care residents. But every week after that, once it gets approved, there'll be, we should be, continue to get more of a supply. And then there's other vaccine candidates that could get approved and will have more vaccine available. So these next couple months are gonna be really critical, but I think maybe we're starting to see some light here. I'm gonna share another slide here, just kind of shows how we've trended. So this is already March to this last, to today actually. And these are our positive cases in red, our recovered cases in green, and this is our active. Again, I mentioned we were close to six hundred here, active at one point, and now we're down to two hundred. So we want things to keep going that way. It's been nine months, it's been a long, grueling last nine months, but I think we're, like I said, I think maybe we're getting close. I'm cautiously optimistic that we can kind of keep this going. And what's gonna be important is that, you know, like right now is not the time to start, to start opening things up and lighting up on all the things we've talked about with masking and social distancing and hand washing. Those are still really critical for us to maintain, to keep doing, to be diligent about doing that so that we can get through these next couple months and get closer. One extra slide here, I'll show you two. It's not just Wapak County, it's our region. Our Fox Valley region went through the surge all at the same time. And you can see some of the region, this is from Data Care. All the counties that they provide service in have started to kind of have that downward trend as well. So very encouraging. And Data Care had a presentation last week to community leaders and they mentioned the same kind of, they did the same kind of things on hospitalizations, which they were at critical levels, you know, running out of room, running out of staff, and their numbers have started to drop too for hospitalizations from ICU. So really encouraging that that's going on and very hopeful that we can continue that trend. So that's kind of where we are now. As I mentioned, it's been, you know, it's been a long road. The surge that we went through was probably the longest sustained surge that a lot of, that even people haven't seen in the country. Even when New York went through its surge in April, it didn't last that long, it didn't last at those rates. So we went through a really difficult stretch. Like I said, we had a, public health-wise, we had to hire ten extra temporary staff just to try to continue with our contact tracing. And staff did an amazing job and continue to do that. We're continuing from the public health standpoint to continue to contact trace. As a vaccine comes out, we're preparing, our meetings have gone from once a week for a vaccine to two or three meetings a week now on vaccine preparation. We applied to be an administrator of the vaccine, so when we start getting to maybe some of the critical infrastructure groups, when we start getting to some of the public, the larger public being able to be eligible for the vaccines, we'll be able to provide those. So that's a little bit down the road, you know, when we have more of a capacity and more volume of vaccine. But we're preparing to do that as soon as next week potentially. Healthcare is gonna get that vaccine and that's something they'll administer themselves, but like I said, we're doing it. A couple weeks ago, we did a drive-through flu clinic at the fairgrounds, and that was two-fold, one being to help people get vaccinated for the flu, but it was also kind of a drive-through for us to potentially do some drive-through clinics with the COVID vaccine is available for us to do that. The other piece, other big piece is testing. You know, there was, from the beginning and throughout the summer, there was just not the volume of testing available that we needed to get our arms around this. In the last two months, the volume of testing that's been available has increased dramatically and has been helpful for us. The faster, the more available and the faster that testing is available, the faster we can get people identified, you know, if they're positive and then have them isolated, and that helps slow the spread. And so we had a couple times this summer where we had the National Guard help us out at the fairgrounds to do, to drive-through testing. And then the last month and a half, we've been able to have the National Guard weekly at the fairgrounds for drive-through testing. Couple that with the healthcare providers being able to have more of the capacity to do it within their health systems, but also Data Care's been able to have some mobile sites. And they've been in New London for the last couple weeks, once a week, they've been able to pack with a mobile drive-through site. And this month, they're also gonna be in Quiddville for a mobile drive-through site. So that's been really, really helpful too. So those three things are still really important for us, is contact tracing, disease investigation, testing, and now we're moving into vaccine. So like I said, if we kind of can keep going in the direction we're going, we just have to hold on here a little bit, make it through this winter, and I think we're gonna start getting to the other side. One last thing I just want to share too is, this again was shared from Data Care, some things remember, just because we're in that downward trend doesn't mean we're out of the woods. You know, we're still waiting for the impact of Thanksgiving. I think that's, right now, we're not seeing anything coming out of that, so that's really encouraging. The state reported more than five hundred deaths in the last eleven days, that's going back from Friday. There's been over thirty-five hundred Wisconsinites that have lost their lives due to COVID-19. One in four patients hospitalized goes to the ICU. All seventy-two counties have very high to critically high disease activity, so that's still true. There's still some, most of the counties in the state are still in that critically high level. And again, our action today will determine how our COVID numbers show up in the coming weeks, so we need to do everything we can to continue to stop the spread. And then a few things that we can do personally to help slow the spread. One that's really important right now, and this has been important throughout, but this has really been a difficult thing on a lot of different levels for people, and mental health is definitely playing a part in that. And that goes back to everybody in the community who's just, there's a lot of fatigue and it's tiring, it's exhausting. The pandemic has just left a huge mark on us and mental health awareness is gonna be a big piece of that. And I think it's important to always ask people if they're okay and to make sure we're mindful of that. Again, wear masks every time you leave the house, reduce your non-essential visits and activities, socially distance every time, and stop gatherings. Those are gonna be really important to continue to do going forward. And then we can, maybe we'll continue to have that trend continue going in the next direction, we can start looking forward to getting back to the way things were, to get back to normal. We're a ways away from that. The vaccine's gonna be a long process, it's a tremendous undertaking. And this is a worldwide pandemic and the vaccine is a worldwide piece to that. So it's gonna take some time, but I think we're getting closer to it. And, you know, looking forward to the first F D approval this week, and that's gonna be helpful. One last thing before I end here, I just want to say too, you know, from the beginning, our public health department has worked with all of our communities in the county and we've collaborated on a lot of things. We're always communicating and trying to get information out and make sure everybody's on the same page. And that's been, it's been a tremendous effort and partnership with the city in London. Chad, the city administrator, we meet with all the city administrators weekly. We've worked with the city of New London Police Department on several things. One thing they still do for us, and we've had to do this occasionally, when we can't get ahold of someone, we exhaust every possibility to try to get ahold of someone who's got a positive test, and sometimes we don't have the information. We've had to do welfare checks on folks just to make sure they're okay. The police department's helped us with that. The Parks Department has helped us with a lot of things. So it's been really important for that community collaboration with the county and the health department to make sure that we're doing everything we can to help the residents in our communities and make sure we're providing, you know, the most accurate information and the best messaging and, you know, all the safe practices. And I just want to say that the city's done an outstanding job, just doing things like we're doing right now. We're on, you know, everybody's wearing a mask. It's been, it's been really important and really great for the, I think, community, county-wide, working with the individual communities in London's been et cetera as well. Like I said, this, we started working together from the beginning and I think that's made a really big difference on some of the things we've been doing with you. So I'll just leave it at that. Again, thanks for having me and I'll be happy to answer any questions that are going to my head as well.
Thank you, Jed. Alright, we'll move on to standing and special committees. I'll start off with the Board of Public Works, Mr. Barrington.
Thank you. Board of Public Works met on November thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Meeting was called at four-thirty in the afternoon. We had to change one item. We had County W instead of County X, which was made, carried by all. First item brought up was wastewater treatment facility update. We looked it over, saw nothing that should give warning or anything to us. The next item was review traffic analysis on County Highway X. Wapaka County Highway Department, the city previously requested that the Wapaka County Highway Department reduce the speed limit on County X in the city limits from thirty-five to twenty-five miles an hour. Casey Byersdorf presented information on speed and traffic, information collected on this stretch of road in early November. Analysis was typically done when changes are made. The board thanked Casey for his information and will bring the topic up for future discussion in a council meeting next month. The next item was discussion of crosswalk and/or additional lighting at the New London Street Department, School Department bus garage. At a previous meeting, the board talked about painting a crosswalk adjacent from the old bus garage, up the old building, as drivers cross from the parking lot and cross on Wolf River Avenue to the bus garage. Mr. Hirth informed the board that it would be more than just adding a crosswalk paint, as considerations need to be made to include curb cutouts, ADA detectable warning ramps, and pedestrian crossing signs. The board will review these options at a future meeting. The next item was to recommend that the council considers an ordinance authorizing new stop signs on Lawrence Street. Previous discussion took place regarding installation of stop signs at many uncontrolled intersections. Currently, there are seventy-six uncontrolled intersections in the city. The plan is to update five intersections per year within the existing city budget. Intersection proposed at this time to install new stop signs on Lawrence Street at Eastlaw, Millard, Roland, Laura, and Martin Street. Motion being carried, that'll be brought to council tonight. The next, we discussed the progress on Mill Street Improvement Project. Chad Hirth led a discussion on the status of the Mill Street Improvement Project. Because of funding needs from the city and New London Utilities, the city is working with Odagami County Highway Department to push the project off for a few years. More information will come as internal discussions continue. Director's report, there was nothing to report. I move to bring to council tonight an ordinance to install stop signs at designated intersections along Lawrence Street. This is the first reading.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Barrington, seconded by Mr. Zog. Any additions or corrections? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried by all.
That is all I have tonight, Charlie.
Thank you, Ms. Barrington. Next on the agenda is finance and personnel, Mr. Morak.
Your honor, Finance and Personnel Committee met on Wednesday, December second, at four-thirty PM in the council chambers and via Zoom. Finance Director Judy Ratkey discussed the closure of the Economic Development Loan Fund. The financial information was approved as presented to the state by Ms. Ratkey. Money was then sent to the state and the state earmarks those funds for the City of New London Qualified CD GB Projects. The survey information has also been completed and sent to the state for the review and approval. Ms. Ratkey thanked Ms. E. Kempin for her help in the survey data, and also Mayor Hankey, Dave Morak, and Bob Esau for their help with door knocking and contacts. A special thank you to John Fochet for his efforts to stay with the process and continue to reach out to the citizens in the area to get the surveys necessary to bring that area into percentages needed to qualify for the CD GB street funding. To complete the process, the CD GB closed facilities application will be completed and sent. There will be a public participation hearing and a resolution to authorize submission of the CD GB closed facilities application at the next finance meeting on January sixth at four-thirty PM. Motion was made by Barrington and seconded by O'Connell to recommend a council approval of the 2021 Gold Cross Ambulance Service Agreement. Motion carried eight-zero. Finance Director Judy Ratkey reviewed the retirement schedule and designated funds that have been set aside for payment of those obligations. Comparing these funds, the funds set aside each year and the estimated retirement schedule, there are currently adequate funds being set aside each year to meet the city's future obligations. The committee will continue to review the schedule on annual basis. Finance Director Ratkey reviewed the monthly financial reports. Finance Director was discussed. Finance Director report was discussed. There being no public comment or further business, the meeting adjourned at five-twenty-one PM. The next regularly scheduled Finance Committee meeting will be held in the council chambers on Wednesday, January sixth at four-thirty PM. Then I'd like to move to approve an ambulance service agreement with Gold Cross Ambulance Services Incorporated.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Morak, seconded by Mr. Zog. To approve an ambulance service agreement with Gold Cross Ambulance Service. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots.
Screen's dark.
Dennis? Motion carried by all.
And I move we waive the rules to adopt the ordinance in one reading.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Morak, seconded by Ms. Lori Dean. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots.
Screen's dark in front of us. Oh. Pardon me.
Mr. Zog, you need to vote yet?
What was that?
Vote. Mr. Esau?
Mr. Fouchet?
Mr. Fochet.
There we go.
Motion carried by all.
And I move we approve an ordinance to amend ordinance number thirteen ninety-four regarding the tax levy to be levied upon all taxable property in the state.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Morak, seconded by Dennis Herter. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried by all.
And I move we approve the license list as presented for December.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Morak, seconded by Dennis Herter. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passed ten-zero.
That's all I have for finance and personnel.
Thank you, Ms. Morak. Move on to next, Park and Recreation, Mr. Esau.
Thank you, your honor. December Park and Rec Committee meeting met on December first. Meeting was called at order at four forty-seven. Alvin Dean moved to approve the agenda, seconded by Alvin Fochet. Motion was carried by all. Public comments relevant to items on the agenda, there was none presented. Review and adopt the City of New London Comprehensive Outdoor Recreational Plan Corp., Trish Knaw with East Center Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission, lead a presentation led a presentation on the final draft of the five-year corp plan. The committee did add a few additional items to the plan and did note that the plan could be amended to include new efforts before it expires in 2025. Alamon Herter moved, seconded by Alamon Foché, that council approve the 2021 through 2025 New London five-year comprehensive outdoor recreational plan with suggested additions. Motion carried by all. Approve purchase video server, audio system, camera design, and bid specifications from Camera Corner Connecting Point, CCCP, in the amount of $3,000 to be financed by the Cable Fund. City staff have been working on plans to upgrade the old video cable servers, the council room audio system, and replacing the council room cameras for recording meetings. The design is complex as several different systems need to be put together to work properly. Because of the cost, the city will need to bid out the work. Staff worked with the CCCP to create engineering design specifications for the project. Chad Hirth is requesting authorization to purchase the design specifications in the amount of $3,000 so that the city can bid out the project. Alamon Foché moved, seconded by Alamon Dean, that council authorize the purchase of the proposed design and bid specification from Camera Corner Connecting Point in the amount of $3,000. Funding to come from the Cable Fund. Motion was carried by all. Recommend to council a resolution supporting World Migratory Bird Day. As a requirement for the New London Bird City, Wisconsin designation, the city must pass a resolution to observe and support World Migratory Bird Day. Dean moved, seconded by Alamon Foché, to approve the 2021 Resolution Supporting World Migratory Bird Day. Motion was carried by all. Directors' Report and Memo Service Anniversary Reports, no November anniversaries to report. Committee members report, there's none presented. Future agenda items, bike trail south of Flora Hill Cemetery, replacement of Riverside Boat Launch Docks. Meeting was adjourned at 5:12. I would look for council to adopt the City of New London Comprehensive Outdoor Recreational Plan Corp.
Second. Motion been made by Bissaw, seconded by Mr. Zog to approve resolution adopting the 2021, 20 through 2025 Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried by all.
And I would look for council approval of purchasing a video server, audio system, camera design, and bid specifications from Camera Corner Connecting Point, CCCP, in the amount of $3,000 to be financed by the Cable Fund.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Bissaw, seconded by Ms. Dean. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots.
And I would recommend to council a resolution supporting World Migratory Bird Day.
Second. And I'll read that to you. Resolution supporting World Migratory Bird Day. Whereas migratory birds are some of the most beautiful and easily observed wildlife that share our communities. And whereas many citizens recognize and welcome migratory songbirds as symbolic hairbringers of spring. And whereas these migrant species also play an important economic role in our community, controlling insects, pests, and generating millions in recreational dollars statewide. And whereas migratory birds and their habitats are declining throughout the Americas, facing a growing number of threats on their migratory migration routes and in both their summer and winter homes. And whereas public awareness and concern are crucial components of migratory bird conservationists. And whereas citizens enthusiastic about birds, informed about the threats they face, and empowered to help address those threats can directly contribute to maintaining healthy bird populations. And whereas since 1993, World Migratory Bird Day has become a primary vehicle for focusing public attention on the nearly 350 species that travel between nesting habitats in our communities and throughout North Americas, and their wintering grounds in South and Central America, Mexico and the Caribbean, and the Southern U.S. And whereas hundreds of thousands of people with will observed World Migratory Bird Day gathering in town squares, community centers, schools, parks, nature centers, and wildlife refugees, refugees, to learn about birds, take action to conserve them, and simply to have fun. And whereas Wild Migratory Bird Day officially is held each year in the second Saturday in May, is observance is not limited to a single day. And planners are encouraged to schedule activities on the dates best suited to the presence of both migrants and celebrants. And whereas Wild Migratory Bird Day is not only a day to foster appreciation for wild birds and to celebrate and support migratory bird conservation, but also a call to action. Now therefore, I, Mark Herter, as mayor of the City of New London, Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May 8th, 2021, as World Migratory Bird Day in the City of New London. And I urge all citizens to celebrate this observance and to support efforts to protect and conserve migratory birds and their habitats in our community and the world at large. Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Bissaw and seconded by Mr. Zog. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Fred, one more time. Thank you, sir. Motion carried by all.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Bissaw. We will move on to the Planning Commission and, Mr. Bissaw, you're up again.
The City of New London Planning Commission meeting met on November 19th. Meeting was called order at 5:01. Those in attendance were Bissaw, members Basset, Gabbert, Noel, Steingrabber, Walbrook, and Mayor Herter. Excuse members Spillman. Others in attendance were City Administrator Chad Hirth, Dr. Brian Van Huesen, Valley Family Medicine. Motion was made to adopt the agenda, was seconded by Noel. Motion was carried 7-0. Approval of the October 22nd, 2020 Planning Commission minutes. Motion by Herter, seconded by Steingrabber to approve the October 22nd minutes. Carried, motion was carried 7-0. A request for sign variances. Dr. Brian Van Huesen from Valley Family Medicine was present to request two variances to install a second sign on his property. Per the municipal code, a second sign on the property would need to be 200 feet from the first sign. Dr. Van Huesen requested a variance from this regulation as the frontage on the property is not long enough to allow the specified distance in the ordinance. In reviewing the request, staff also determined that the original sign may be in the right-of-way, which conflicts with 17.09-11-2 of the municipal code. Dr. Van Huesen requested a variance to allow the existing sign to remain at its current location. Before making the decision on the second request, the commission requested a legal opinion of the city's liability in allowing the existing sign to stay in the right-of-way if someone would hit it with a vehicle and have the property line surveyed to ensure that the sign was in fact in the right-of-way. Motion was carried by Mayor Herter, seconded by Gabbert to approve a variance of installing a second sign within 200 feet of an existing sign. Motion carried 7-0. Update on planning issues and other agenda items. Administrator Chad Hirth mentioned a situation that he's working on with a property owner who completed a driveway expansion and storm sewer inlet modification without a permit. The open full-time building inspector position has been posted and the city is accepting applications until November 30th. Due to the Christmas holiday, the next Planning Commission meeting is expected to be held on Thursday, December 17th, 2020. Motion adjourned by Mayor Herter, seconded by Basset. Meeting was adjourned at 5:41. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Bissaw.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Fred.
As a follow-up on the Planning Commission, Travis Cologne, a general agent from Thriven, called me today and stated they're planning on putting a new sign up if they can. And Thriven alerted him to contact the Planning Commission and bring the plans or whatever they plan on doing. So I told him to do that. And so if you want to put that on your next agenda, if that's the place to do it.
Yeah, he's already on the draft agenda.
He is, okay.
Thank you, Zog. All right, moving on. Next on the list is Economic Development Committee. Mr. Morak.
Thank you, Your Honor. Economic Development Committee met on Tuesday, November 17th at 4:30 PM in the city council chambers and via Zoom. The October 27th minutes were approved. Chairman Mark introduced two new student members to the committee. Kennedy Lathrup and Elena Wolfe. Both juniors at New London High School were recently appointed to the Economic Development Committee. Each provided a quick introduction and why they were excited to represent the student body on this committee. City Administrator Hirth provided a quick summary of conversations he has had with two developers regarding the downtown riverfront property. Jackie Miller, Madeline Check, and Pat McEnroy with the SC Switeriski LLC were present and provided an update on their market study for New London. In summary, the SCS team felt that there is potential in New London for up to 150 additional multifamily units within the next three years. Their proposals would include a variety of building styles, range of rental rates, and consideration for a second site in New London for additional growth. Hirth will continue to work with both developers so they can provide final proposals to the committee at a future date. April Kapitski provided a draft copy of a proposed survey to New London businesses with the objective to gain input on how the COVID-19 pandemic has affected them and how they are adopting. After discussion and comments from the committee, Kapitski will update the survey with a potential release date after January 1st. Under the Chamber of Commerce report, Kapitski reported that Malleyet Travel has relocated from the downtown to a home business setting with time being due to the reduction in business. The former New London Family Diner Building at 400 North Shawno Street has a price reduction from $249,000 to $99,000. The pantry is posted that to be closing January 1st, 2020, and the chamber has been assisting local businesses with COVID-related grant opportunities. Administrator Hirth reported on several conversations and meetings that the city has had with different business leaders or developers with potential expansion or development opportunities in the City of New London. Suggested agenda items for future meetings include presentations from potential developers for the downtown riverfront site, a discussion regarding next step options for Claritas marketing information, conversations with the New London School District on how they are managing with the COVID-19 pandemic, 2021 economic development goals, and Oliver B.C. Advancing AI at Wisconsin. No public comment was given. Lathrup and Wolfe provided comments regarding the perspective on how students were handling school and other challenges due to the pandemic. The next committee meeting will be scheduled for December 15th at 4:30 PM. Meeting adjourned at 5:34 PM. You also have in your packet the monthly report from the Wapaka County Economic Development Corporation. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Ms. Morak. Ms. Barrington.
Question, you said the pantry is closing January 1st, 2020?
Yep.
Changed her mind. She's not closing.
2021, I'm sorry.
That's what I, question 2020.
She changed her mind. Last I seen, she is not closing.
Oh.
Okay.
I go with it.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, we'll move on to minutes and reports. We'll stand as red. You guys should all got the emails for them. Continuing on, we will, reports of mayors, reports of mayors, reports of officers, and recent events and announcements to the public. We'll start with the mayor's report. Just like to highlight that, I'd like to congratulate everyone from top to bottom for a successful reverse holiday parade. It really brought out the holiday spirit in our city. The city really lit up with lights and downtown was packed. The whole city was packed. Like to highlight April Kapitski and the chamber for organizing that and really pulling that all together. I'd also like to mention while everybody's enjoying the holiday season, please be safe. Hope you all have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We'll move on next to the Utility Manager, Mr. Basset.
Thank you, Your Honor. Electric crews had two primary wires come together by the Waters Restaurant on November 10th at 5:30. That tripped the central circuit affecting 300 customers of New London. Crews trimmed the trees and tightened those wires to fix that issue. Electric crews replaced a span of wire on Algoma Street that was giving us some voltage issues. They also took that opportunity to replace a pole at the location and remove the transformer from the backyard. Electric crews worked on a temporary service to get power to the Christmas lights for the Pearl Street Bridge. And on December 6th, electric crews finished a pole changeout by the FX Auto. That was a Sunday and they strung wires across the road of Shawno Street there. That same evening, crews responded to a blown fuse on Bruce Street, causing approximately 30 customers to be out of power. Crews found a considerable load on that transformer, causing the fuse to weaken and operate. Water crews went out to London Acres near the end of November and fixed bent water stacks. And they also fixed a couple of water leaks at Dexter and Pershing and Orville and Maple Creek the week of November 16th through the 20th. Water crews utilized a new listening device this year. Mike Pinch had brought me some estimated leak savings from their hard work. Of 57 million gallons of water was saved, which would be equivalent to 140 water towers of water that would run unmetered into the ground. That amounts to 10% on New London Utilities total amount of water pumped for the year. So I'd like to recognize my water department for an exceptional job of savings there. Water crews tested large water meters on the 30th of November. Tyler Stray and Kyle Stewart completed their second week of apprenticeship training the 16th through the 20th of November. And we completed interviews for our line position that took place on December 4th. We interviewed seven individuals and we're in the process of picking out of that group. And I would also like to recognize Kevin Schramm for 27 years of service as an equipment operator for the utilities. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Move on to Director of Public Services, City Administrator Report. Mr. Hirth.
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, I want to remind just like last month to let everybody know to remove some pump hoses from the curb if you're pumping into the street. We don't want those discharging into the street and then as temperatures go down that the water starts freezing and creating hazardous conditions. So definitely pull those out of the street in the curb line. We were contacted by a contractor that they will be working with on some utility work. It's not for the city, but it's for some local business in town. They're working on this on Industrial Loop Road. They're creating a new sanitary sewer force main for Tyson. They're going to be running down Industrial Loop Road. So Industrial Loop Road will be closed to the general public but open for local traffic. So if you do need to get around there, we suggest that you take the detour or go around on High Street to get down to businesses. But they're working with the local businesses for the local traffic to get to those businesses. But if you do need to get access in there, you might need to go around on High Street to get around to the businesses on Industrial Loop Road. Our recreation department's working on the spring/winter/spring program guide. So if you're interested in those programs, be on the lookout for that in the near future. Tax collection is coming up and we've been told that First State Bank is not going to accept tax payments this year. So if you have to submit those payments, you will be coming into the municipal building for that. Because we anticipate more traffic at the municipal building and because of COVID concerns, we are asking that people either drop off their tax payment at the drop-off box at the front lobby here or outside the front doors here, or mail it in. That's just going to help with the traffic in the lobby, less traffic, COVID concerns, things like that. So it's just going to help us if you could drop it off or mail it in for this season. And then last but not least, our video producer, Casey Zempel, is doing awesome creating content on social. is doing awesome driving, creating content on social media about the community and what's going on and just putting a positive message out there. So definitely, if you haven't seen those already, check out all our Facebook pages, not only the city, but Police Department, Library, Parks and Rec. We have multiple Facebook pages out there. Like them all, and that puts you in the loop for making sure that you're in the know for all the content and all the great things happening in New London. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harth. Move on to Chief of Police, Mr. Slater.
We had a couple of anniversaries. Josh Wilson, 19 years. Kathy Martin's 13 years. Then a couple of announcements. The City of New London, we were fortunate enough that over the Christmas season here, we were able to receive a grant and some donations from Walmart, which is going to allow the Police Department and other city departments to go do some shopping for some families. So we're hoping to sponsor nine families to be able to buy some gifts for some children this year. It's been a tough year. So I've been in contact with them. We're going to do some shopping next Friday and a day or two before Christmas, we're going to drop off the gifts with the squad car. So very positive thing for our community here and be able to help give some kids a Merry Christmas. Wanted to remind everyone about winter parking. No parking on the streets from 3:00 AM to 6:00 AM as we get ready for some snow, if it ends up snowing this year. Next week, Wednesday, we are going to be doing some testing at the Police Department for the new officers. We are filling one position right away and expecting a retirement next spring. So hopefully be able to get two out of this position or out of this testing process here. And then finally, on Thursday night at 5:30, starting at 5:30 here in front of the Fire Department, Santa Claus is coming to town. We are going to be escorting him through town up and down a few different streets with a squad car being followed by a fire truck. We should be hitting them a lot of roads if you want to see him, that you'll either be able to see him out your window or walk a block or two to be able to see him. This is being sponsored by Wolf River Community Bank. The map is on their website, I believe. But we're going to start here at the Fire Department. We're going to go around the block down here in the 5th Ward. We'll go through downtown, up over Pearl Street, down Wolf River Avenue. Then we're going to go down Mill Street, back up Division Street, down Wyman Street, back at Road for a little bit, come back on Oshkosh, go through Cedarhurst, down Warner Allen, and end at the Waters Restaurant. So look at that map. Kids should be able to see Santa Claus, wave at him.
When is this?
Pretty well lit up by the fire truck.
What day is this?
Thursday night at 5:30, we're starting.
Next Thursday?
This Thursday.
This Thursday, okay.
Yep, so in two days. So should be kind of fun, trying something new here. So spread a little cheer. Then finally, the Fire Department Chief Wilford wasn't able to attend tonight. He has training. So he has asked that I announce two anniversaries for him.